All the district board study, that board study session. Go off please, Lamond.
Robert Dieckert.
Right.
Mary Field.
You're Sean Hamilton.
Here.
Clint Harmon. Chuck Lander. Steve.
Yeah. And please. My pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Dr. Bob, here we go.
All right, first item on the agenda is the discussion on strategic goals for 2122. The board had asked me to get with my team and put together a draft of strategic goals. We have that in front of you. A couple of things I want to mention on there, I'm not going to read it all to you. It should be attached to your board packet this time, electronic. Couple of things with that. One is you'll see a lot of the goals are related to recovery from COVID. So we have some goals on there for that. You'll also notice that many of the goals are short term. The reason for that is I didn't want to create a two or three year plan since the superintendent transition is coming up and tie the new superintendent's hands with goals because he may want to do a different process when he takes over. So you'll see most of the goals are short term in nature. But with that being said, I'm not going to read it all to you. You have a week to take a look at it. We'll take action at next week's board meeting, but I will entertain any questions that anyone has.
Anybody have any questions? I haven't had a chance to look, so it'll take me a little while to.
And during the week, if you have questions, drop me a line and I'm happy to go over them.
Any problems, ready to move on? Okay.
Okay, we have a second reading of revised policies. Steve had the pleasure of attending his first policy committee meeting and he said he can't wait for the next one. So Bob and Steve and I met to go over this, these policy revisions. Everything was pretty self-explanatory, but there was one policy that I did want to bring to your attention that we spent quite a bit of time talking about and it's policy eight colon nine zero that deals with parent organizations and booster clubs. If you remember, those of you that were here, we did a full policy revision. Bob and I were trying to remember when, but we couldn't remember the exact year. We thought maybe four or five years ago.
Yeah, I would say.
But we went through a full policy revision and at that time, we made some significant changes to policy eight colon nine zero dealing with parent organizations and booster clubs. And a couple of those changes dealt with trying to get some more fiduciary responsibility and also making sure that when donations were made, we didn't end up with Title IX issues. And so we made those changes. This time, the IASB, their recommended changes deal more with these parent organizations and booster clubs and making sure that the school district and the board of education is further protected. And to make a long story short, they are recommending that our booster clubs and parent organizations be required to do one of two things. Either they run all of their finances through our school activity funds, not their own funds, our activity funds, or they become their own 501(c)(3) organization. And the reason for, as we talked about it, our recommendation from the policy committee was that we have all of these booster clubs and parent organizations become a 501(c)(3) for a couple of reasons. One, for liability protection, that when someone holds a fundraising event and they're doing it in the school's name, if something would happen, the school district could be liable for that. Whereas if they're their own 501(c)(3), they're their own organization. Secondly, they have to take care of their own fiscal matters. We don't have to worry about it, which right now we have to give books and we have to go through our audits. If they're their own organization, they do their own thing. They would still have to follow our rules for donations, which is, which we appreciate. They would donate, they can recommend what they want to use it for, but the board would have the final say over that. One of the concerns that was brought up was the cost of going through the 501(c)(3) process. And so we had talked about at our meeting, the possibility of the school district maybe loaning money to these organizations that they could pay back to get their 501(c)(3). Sean brought up to me today that you really don't need an attorney to do that, a CPA can do that also. So I'm going to reach out and try to get some information. But we have five different groups that this would fall under right now. Two of those groups, the music boosters and the touchdown club, already have their own 501(c)(3). Music boosters have had it, Bob, for years. I don't remember when.
Yeah, whatever's easy to give.
Yeah. They've had their own for years.
Yeah.
The three that don't are the athletic boosters, the athletic, I'm sorry, the athletic boosters, prom fest and PSO, thank you, and PSO. So if the board approves this policy, which will come to you next week, we would need to meet with them and I would want to give them a heads up that this is the direction we're going. Nobody's accusing these groups of anything. We appreciate what they do and like Steve brought up in our meeting, it's as much for their protection as it is the school district's protection.
Absolutely.
So Bob, Steve, I don't know if you have anything to add on that that I missed?
I think you covered it really well.
So any questions on that? Does the board have any concerns with that direction?
It's smart for them to do that because it's just, well, it's a thing of the future. I mean, they need to do it.
That's what we talked about last week. We discussed, was trying to get them to do themselves anything.
Yeah, I think so.
So I just want to make sure those groups have a heads up if the board does approve this policy and let them know that we'll figure out what that cost is and if they need help to let us know. Because we obviously, they do great things for our kids and we want to make sure that they're able to keep doing those things. Okay?
Thank you, Bob and Steve, for serving on this. I know it's not easy. And to you too, Dr. Bob.
So any other questions on the policies from anybody? Okay? I want to talk about the announced closure of the Dresden station on top of everything else that's been going on today. The Exelon generation put out a press release today that they were submitting their official post-shutdown decommissioning activities report for both the Byron and the Dresden stations. A lot of people, understandably, were very concerned about that. They have publicly said for a long time what their closure dates are. And there are certain timelines they have to meet for the NRC paperwork decommissioning process in order to meet those timelines. And they are not going to back off on those timelines at a time when the legislators are considering legislation because they say they're not blocking, this is real. And we believe it's real. So this paperwork is not a surprise. We expected this, but I do understand the impact that this is having on the people that work out there and the families who received that notice today. We are still working very hard to try to make sure that legislation gets passed. In their press release, you can see that they still say policymakers continue working on legislation that would preserve all four plants because they list the Sow and Braegwies at risk of early closure. So I know this was kind of a jolt to people and you might have heard something about it and it'll probably be in the newspapers, but we expected this. We expected this to come. We had hoped legislation would be passed by now, but it's not. And so we're, we're going to keep moving forward with that.
Any word from our lobbyists?
Nothing new from last time and then everybody's still playing political chicken with each other. And you know, the deadbeat, you know, the, everybody seems to believe the end of August is the date something needs to happen for a variety of reasons. That's when the solar subsidies run out. There's a refueling at the Byron station scheduled for September 14th. So there's a lot of things I think that will need to happen and hopefully it happens by the end of August. That's our hope. Continue? Any other questions on that?
I think we're good. I mean, it is what it is. We just have to sit and wait.
Yep.
Hope that things work out well and if we didn't call somebody, let us know.
I will be in touch. Mr. Spencer, you want to talk about the Acclaimed Kohler program?
Yeah, real quick. If you remember, last month, you passed the ACE framework that Tammy and Bob from, and her team brought to the board for approval. From there, we worked on our next step, which is something that we had a group and they're going to talk a little about here in a moment, but we came up for a Acclaimed Kohler graduate program. I don't want to spoil any of their fun that they're going to do to present for you. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Kenny and Mr. Mambra, I'm going to present that to you.
Wherever you want to stand.
Good evening, everyone. We're here, we're going to talk about the Acclaimed Kohler program. We're very excited about this program because it takes our ACE guide and it takes it to the next level and implementing something that's going to really make our graduates stand out and lead them on a path towards their college and career readiness.
About a month ago, I was invited to join another committee and I showed up in this very room with the strip people here. You guys know Tammy's at the unit office. Chris is the co-principal of the high school now, superintendent next year. Jen, co-principal. I am the assistant principal at the high school. Mrs. Dransfeld is in the guidance office. Keith Piper is also in the guidance office, excuse me. And Bradshawman is the department chair at the, at the high school as well.
So we met a couple of times to discuss this program and it all started with the ACE framework, which is the post-secondary and career expectations that you approved at the last meeting. And that kind of set the framework for where we wanted to go with this program because we really want to focus, especially starting with our eighth graders, on what their path is going to be so they can really delve into those classes that they need to take in order to be successful when they get to the next level, whether it's a career, whether it's a college that they attend. So what we looked at were the ISB College and Career Readiness indicators. And those are new things that were put onto the school report card by ISB. And you can see them listed on there. They have to do with attendance and your GPA and math and English courses that you take. There's various indicators that are present on our school report cards for the high school. And we'll go into that a little bit deeper when we look at the indicators. But with the, the program, we've deemed it the Kohler way and it's something that we are going to start introducing to them in eighth grade before they even come over so that we can just build this program and make it something that's very special and just not, you know, something that they receive at graduation. It's something that they're really going to have to strive for and build throughout their high school career.
Currently, here's how we recognize some of our students at CCHS throughout our district. Right now, we recognize the top 10% during graduation. They stand up, their names, where they're going to school, their post-high school career, what their plans are. We recognize our number one and two in class ranking. Our National Honor Society is recognized. You guys can kind of go down through the list on your own there. Some are recognized at graduation, some are recognized throughout banquets throughout the school year. Different scholarships are passed out. Towards the end of the school year, we have a banquet for those students that earned those scholarships. And then there's some outside recognitions as well.
But with this program, what it's going to do is going to take all of those programs that we have and meld them all together. They kind of are in individual silos right now with your top 10% being looking solely at GPA, your valedictorian and excluditorian looking solely at GPA. So what we want to do is make, in a program where the student is working on all aspects of being a well-rounded student, it's really going to focus on well-rounded college and career-ready students. And we're going to do that by looking at academics, their character, involvement in school, community service, and then career development as they start eighth through 12th grade in the program.
Some of our goals that we came up with, increase student conversations, meaning getting down to eighth grade, going to have those meetings, their second semester of eighth grade, you know, what is your plan through Colsey High School? What route do you want to go? And they may not know in eighth grade, some days still don't know. But they, just to get those conversations started, early exposure to college and career-ready options that most will be communicated with them, they'll know kind of their routes that they plan to take. Community service was a big one. We do have some flexibility in some of the criteria and I personally, and I think some of our group, you know, the community service aspect, we really, really, really want to push for those students to get involved, you know, different activities, different programs about the community. It's going to focus on career path courses. If you're going to a four-year school or a two-year school or you're going right into the workforce, so they're going to try to identify, you know, their path through their four years of high school as early as possible. Measuring students' success, if that's GPA, if that's getting into the school, their test scores, et cetera. The big one that I like to push is the student involvement. We have a lot of students who, you know, maybe athletes, maybe pushing for that top one, two, three, top 10% of a class rank. Students that are in every single club and maybe aren't a part of a team or academics is, you know, tier two for them. This will, you know, hopefully try to get those students involved in multiple different revenues, avenues throughout their four years of Colsey High School. Last one, motivating students. There's an attendance piece on there where they can only miss so many days. There's a behavior piece on there on the criteria where they can't have, you know, a school suspension, in-school or out-of-school suspension. So just trying to motivate them, push them to be better, you know, in the classroom and involved in the community.
So Mrs. Ealdes has created these wonderful websites, our pieces of websites that we're working on. And if you look at this sheet actually that I gave you, it is going to pretty much mirror what is on the website right now. And we start with the Acclaimed Kohler. So there's two different levels. We have the Acclaimed Kohler and then we have the Acclaimed Kohler Scholar. So our Acclaimed Kohler, if you look under the requirements up here, under GPA, they have to have a 3.0 or higher. The state sets it at a 2.75, but we wanted to raise the bar a little bit. We looked at the difference between the number of students at 2.75 and 3.0, just to kind of get an idea of what would be a better option. And we felt that we could raise the bar a little bit to push those students to do a little bit better in class. Our attendance, it's an average of two years and that's going to be your junior and senior year of high school and it's going to be a 95% attendance rate average over those. So they can miss nine and a half days junior year, nine and a half days senior year and still be at the 95%. So once they go over that 19th day, then they fall below the 95%. No behavioral issues requiring suspension. That is something that we felt pretty strongly about. It takes a lot to be suspended from school. It's a pretty major offense to be suspended. So we felt that that was a great way to show that their character and they belong under the Acclaimed Kohler. Academic status are, it's going to be one ELA and one math indicator. So that's going to be down here if you look right below the second green line. You have to have one indicator from the ELA and one indicator from the math column there. So what we offer at Colsey High School are your AP classes. So if they take an AP class and they score a three or higher, they can receive that point. If they don't receive a three or higher, they score a one or two. If they still receive an AP or C in that class, they qualify. Transitional English course or transitional math, the JGC bridge course. And then there's also certain criteria that if they score really well on their SAT in the area of EPRW or the math, that they can qualify for that as well. So it gives them different ways to, to reach that. They don't necessarily have to take an AP course. If it's not in their career path to take that AP course to advance them to where they want to be, they can achieve that through the ACT or the SAT score. They can take the transitional English class and, which would lead them to, you know, JGC or into college and of course, algebra two, which all of our students take as well as long as they receive an AP or C. So those are the academic indicators that they would have to meet in order to become Kohler Scholar. Along with that are the College and Career Ready indicators and those are at the very bottom down there. And they have to have three of those by the time they graduate. And if you look at them, there's so many different options for them. There's options for kids that are going to go to college, there's options for kids that are going to work right out of school. There's just so many different options that they can take and that's the great thing about the program is we're really focusing on all the students, not just those kids that are going to college in four, for four years. So down there, you have career development experience, industry credentials, for example, CNAs. Students that go to GABC and receive their CNA certificate, they can qualify under that. If they are in the military service, if they take a dual-credit career path course, if they complete a program of study, whether that's our business program, line of study, they complete that throughout their four years of high school, they'll receive that. If they have employment for a minimum of 12 months, so if they maintain their job for 12 months, they can earn that. Consecutive summer employment, the big one that we're going to push and we're going to start this one early is the 25 hours of community service. I think that's a great way to get our students out into the community and just a good way for them to be college and career-ready and to have those experiences. And then the last one is two or more organized co-curricular activities. So we're taking those kids that wouldn't normally be involved in something that are just very focused maybe on their studies or focused on work and asking them to be more involved in school. So the only difference then between an Acclaimed Kohler and an Acclaimed Kohler Scholar is going to be two things. Number one is going to be a higher GPA. So we're looking at a GPA of 3.75 and the test, the SAT is going to be a 1400 or an ACT of 30. So those are minimums that were set by the state and that's what their guidelines are to achieve that next level. And we kept those as we felt that those would be pretty high up there to achieve, but doable if they really were at it. So those are how the students would actually qualify for the program. It's a lot and a lot to keep track of, but that's where we feel it's really going to increase the conversations between us and the students, keeping track of where they're going, what their career path is, what their college path is, and really having those good conversations from eighth grade on.
We created a timeline just to lay out the program. Obviously, we can't get something like this up and running for our seniors full force right now because we're going to look at seven semesters of their schooling. We're only going to have them for one more year, two semesters. So for this school year, we're going to try to introduce the full program for ninth and 10th grade students. For 11th and 12th, for our seniors, we're going to try to have an abbreviated program. We're still trying to finalize that criteria for the upperclassmen. And there will be a recognition at graduation, hopefully this coming spring, similar to, you know, an asterisk in the program, probably not standing up and recognizing those students because it's been one year of the program instead of a full, complete program. Next year and each year, we're just going to implement more and more. So our goal is in four years, so eighth graders becoming freshmen, this school year, they'll have a full-blown program when they're seniors. The 2022, 23 school year, full program for ninth, 10th and 11th students, grade students. And then the seniors will have the abbreviated program still. We're going to incorporate a recognition dinner, a celebration to honor those students. The following year, an all-school program implementation, graduation, those students will be recognized, hopefully reading their names with a stole and communicating, you know, who met all the criteria necessary to be part of the program. The Acclaimed Kohler Scholarship, we talked about adding a scholarship in celebration. And Jen will talk about funding and how we're going to implement that. And then in four years, have the full program running, which would essentially replace the top 10% in the valedictorian, excluditorian at graduation.
So through that implementation, it seems like a very long time. It's going to take four years to fully implement the program. We're going to take baby steps each year so that we do it and we do it correctly and make sure that we reach all of our students. We're going to have, actually, Mr. Mystic is currently working on a logo for us for the Kohler, Acclaimed Kohler and Acclaimed Kohler Scholar. We have posters and brochures. This is one of the brochures that we're going to have, but we will have handouts for our students and meetings with our parents so that they understand the program as well. The stoles, which you'll see on the next slide when we get there, that will be implemented with our current freshmen that are coming in. They will wear a stole, a very nice stole, over their graduation gown. We'll have class meetings, eighth grade meetings. It's just a lot of focusing on our college and career paths for our students and getting them where we need them to be. We're going to be looking at community support for this. We would like to incorporate a community recognition ceremony once we get to that third and fourth year time mark there. And we're going to include some title funding to get the program up and running and off the ground.
And in four years, so a freshman now will have the opportunity to earn the full program, graduate from the full program and be recognized at graduation. So where they wear the yellow stole with the Acclaimed Kohler or Acclaimed Kohler Scholar around their gown.
So that's our program that is a lot in a really short amount of time, but the, everything's outlined here. This is what they're going to go by. It's going to take a lot to get the program up and running. We're really excited about it. But I think the one thing that we really need to point out is we're, we're working to create students that are well-rounded, not just focused on taking honors classes and AP classes in order to increase their grade point average to become valedictorian of the class. We want them to take courses that they need in order to be successful once they leave the high school, whether that's a business track, whether that's GABC courses, anything like that, and be involved in our school and have a good character and attendance, which is a very, very, very important part of junior senior year. Any questions for us?
Dr. Bob, you want to?
Jen, just a couple of quick things, just for clarification. So on the academic indicators under mathematics, I see it pretty much mirrors the English side except algebra two. What was the thought process in adding algebra two to the math?
So these academic indicators are actually set by the state. So there are some indicators that we don't offer at Colsey High School yet. These are what we currently have to offer to our students, but as we get rolling through the program, you know, maybe adding additional, but algebra two is a part of that. So when, at the end of the school year, when things are in, uploaded into the student information system, those are the indicators that have to be identified.
And then the other question I had is under career-ready indicators, two or more organized co-curricular activities. I'm assuming the definition of that includes extracurricular, because sometimes we separate those. We may just need to think about that definition because some people might look at that and think, well, that's banned, that's chorus, that's those things.
Anything but athletics.
So just we might need to say co and extracurricular or something like that. If that's the purpose.
Yes.
Okay. Well, first of all, I think you guys have done a great job. I like the idea that you're including so many students with us. It's going to give a lot of kids an opportunity to, to really stand out. And I think, I know it's been a lot of hard work, but it's, I haven't had a chance to really look at it too much, but it looks, it looks pretty good to me. The only question I had, community services, is it going to be limited just to Colsey?
You know, that's something we do not talk about. It's a good point, but I think with as many students as we have, getting 25 hours, we might have to expand beyond Colsey to allow them to get those hours. I mean, there's so many good organizations that are outside of Colsey they could benefit from.
And that's, that's what I was thinking, you know, it'd be good if you could expand to someplace, you know, other places too. And you can limit that, but you know, I think it would be good to, we'd be expanded outside of Colsey. Any board members, any questions, comments?
Just the comments I got, the two things that really stand out to me, one is, you know, attempting to get more kids involved with other things outside of just the classroom. I think probably all of us in here can agree that it was a lot of those co-curricular, extracurricular that really shaped who we are, you know, when we look back at high school. And then the other one that really stands out is that community service because I think for a lot of our students, that's going to be eye-opening to get them out of their comfort zone and maybe into some things that they had no idea even exist right here in our own town, let alone, you know, throughout the county. So I, those are the two that really stand out.
And Steve, I think too, you know, this, this community gives so much to our school district in terms of support. I think it's a good message for the kids to understand, you need to give something back to this community.
Absolutely.
You know, it's given you this much.
Yeah.
So you know, our kids come to school in beautiful facilities with great teachers and great extracurricular programs and everybody supports those. We were talking about booster clubs earlier. Give them something back, it's a good message.
Yeah, I agree. I think those are, those are great.
And I think it's a good way for our community to reach out to us too in school. You know, we need help here, how can you guys help us? And it's going to build that bond between our communities and school.
It's a win-win, I think, on both sides.
I think we do have students doing community service right now, but it's really small pods, really small events, but if we can get the whole student body on board and come to buy it in and make that, emphasize on that piece, I think it would be a great thing.
And it may open their eyes to some areas that we had never thought about.
And Tammy, thanks for being the catalyst to get this off the ground. I know it's been something you've been excited about for a long time, so.
Yeah, great work, great work everybody, everybody that participated. I think it's, it's good, it really is.
I think it's been very exciting about it and has been, personally, we've got a research force to get it going. So appreciate that. And our team members that came in and this summer, this and looking to it.
It's exciting.
Very good.
There is a lot of information there. If you guys have questions, you contact us, we can share our presentation with you so you can come through it again on your own if you have any more questions or feel free to reach out to us.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Again, you don't have to say if you don't want to. You can say if you want to. Again, you don't have to say if you don't want to, you can say if you want to.
Move on?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if anybody heard, but we're trying to figure out a return to school plan. So it's been an interesting week and it's been an interesting day, it's been an interesting four hours, the last four hours, but I want to give you an update on where we're at, kind of where we've been, and give you some information. So, you know, everybody wants to know what the start of the school year is going to look like. And it's coming up, it's August 17th, first day for kids, August 16th, first day for teachers. And since our last board meeting on July 21st, we continue to receive further information and clarification from the CDC, the IDPH, ISBE, and somewhat local health department. On Wednesday, July 28th, which is today, I participated in the meeting with the Grundy County Health Department that they held with all the school district superintendents in the county. I've also remained in close contact with our school district neighbors in Wilmington and Reed Custer, as well as, you know, like I said, all the superintendents in Grundy County, as all of us are trying to navigate this pandemic guidance that we're being provided. I want to give you a timeline of events and information that brings us to tonight's discussion. And I want to reiterate that I'm not passing judgment on any of the information that I've given you. I'm giving you the facts, I'm giving you what I know, and I'm giving you the information that I've been given. So, and that's as of 6:34 today, the information that I have. And I haven't checked emails since 6:00. So, on July 9th, as you know, the CDC provided updated K-12 school guidance. And that included, among many recommendations, a recommendation that all unvaccinated students and staff wear a mask while inside a school. We talked about that. On July 9th, Illinois school districts received a communication from the Illinois State Board of Education that the IDPH was fully adopting those CDC guidelines and that all K-12 schools should implement that guidance to start the school year. On July the 10th, which was a Saturday, the State Superintendent of Education, Dr. Iales, sent a communication clarifying the masking recommendation from the CDC and the IDPH, which reiterated there was no mask mandate for K-12 schools, but rather a recommendation that all unvaccinated students and staff wear a mask while inside a school. There was no mask recommendation for outside of, outside of school. On July 19th, we held a board study session to discuss that updated guidance and how it should be implemented in our school district. That discussion led to the development of a board resolution that was shared with all of you and at your direction was sent to parents on July 20th via a communication I sent to all the parents where we asked for feedback. And as you know, in that feedback, we received about 88, 89% parents that were supportive of the board resolution as it read. On July 21st, the board held a special board meeting where you accepted public comment. And after discussion, you took action to approve the board resolution that outlined the implementation of the guidance we perceived for the school district. One part of that resolution stated that our school district would follow the CDC/IDPH guidance for K-12 schools by recommending that all unvaccinated students and staff wear a face mask while inside of the school building. However, the school district would not enforce a mask mandate. At your July 21st meeting, the board also instructed me to use that board resolution to begin the development of a return to school plan that you wanted to see a draft of tonight. On July the 26th, the IDPH sent school districts an FAQ document providing further clarification on the July 9th guidance. So we had already started developing our return to school plan. I collaborated with our district administrators and our building level administrators, and we pretty much had a draft of what we wanted. And then the July 26th guidance from IDPH came out with an FAQ document. Didn't change a lot, but it made us change a few things that we had in the return to school plan that we've been working to develop. Since that July 21st meeting, the school district administration has continued to collaborate on drafting a return to school plan we held with administrative team meeting earlier this week where we went through the plan item by item. And that was on Monday. After completing that return to school plan, on Tuesday, the CDC abruptly updated their K-12 school guidance. And that was given to us at about 2 o'clock on Tuesday afternoon, that was yesterday. The IDPH adopted this new guidance, which recommends, and I quote, "Universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to K-12 schools regardless of vaccination status. Children should return to full-time in-person learning in the fall with layered prevention strategies in place." So that was the recommendation in the new CDC guidance. So obviously, the change is instead of recommending for just unvaccinated, now they were recommending for all. On Wednesday, July 28th, which is today, I participated in a meeting with all the school superintendents in Grundy and Kendall County, along with public health department officials from both counties. And I've been, I've been very adamant about this. It's very clear in the CDC guidance, in fact, it's on page four of the CDC guidance where it says, "Schools should work with local public health officials to determine the prevention strategies needed in their area by monitoring levels of community transmission." So, one of the things that we've tried to avoid on our board and in my recommendations to you is acting arbitrarily. We're going to act based on the data. And so my question to the health department today was, what's the data? What are the metrics that we're supposed to be using to determine what our mitigation threshold should be? The response from the health department officials were that they're awaiting further guidance also and essentially they don't know what that guidance should be right now. One of the things they recommended, which I brought up in the meeting, is the possibility of using the CDC level of community transmission metric, which I'll come back to in a minute, to determine what those mitigations should be. But, long story short, we really got nothing today from our local health department officials. So essentially what you have is the CDC recommending universal masking, IDPH adopting that recommendation. The guidance stating that local public health officials should be providing that information to us, but local public health officials saying, we don't really know, it's up to you guys. And as I keep saying over and over again, I'm not a public health official. None of you are public health officials. But yet, we're being asked to make public health decisions based on metrics that we don't know what they're supposed to be. So it's extremely frustrating right now. Jake, can you pull up that CDC website real quick for me, please? So the CDC has a website that says levels of community transmission. And that's what the health department said, maybe we could take a look at. During that meeting, I hit refresh, and during that meeting, Grundy County, which you can see in the orange there, changed from moderate risk to substantial risk during the meeting. So it gets updated daily. We moved to substantial risk in Grundy County, which I'll, I'll come back to in a minute. Also this afternoon, well, I guess this morning, we received a letter from our TORT insurance carrier, which is in your folders, stating that, and I quote again, "Failure to adhere to the latest CDC guidance could jeopardize your district's TORT immunities as they relate to communicable diseases like COVID-19." At the last board meeting, I shared with you a opinion from Whitlaw stating that they were good with where we were with our plan or with, with the board resolution. This afternoon, I received a communication from Whitlaw quoting the letter from the TORT insurance carrier and also stating, and I quote again, and you have this letter in your, in your folder, "Whitlaw LLC agrees that failure to adhere to the new guidance issued by the CDC and IDPH jeopardizes the TORT immunities afforded to public school districts and school officials in the event of a claim. The best available strategy is to consider your district's masking policy in light of this information." So that's in your folders, I'll come back to that in a minute as well. I also, at 3:30 today, met with the superintendents of Wilmington and Reed Custer, who get their guidance from the Will County Health Department. And they're also trying to wade through all of this changing information. So where, as of Monday, we all thought we were pretty well set with what was in place and where we were headed, in the last 36 hours, a lot of that information that we have has changed. And I wanted to make sure the board had all that information, as, as I said, that's all the information I have as of, once again, 6:42 today, 6:42 tonight. So, that being said, as I continue to say, we, we should never be politicizing the health and safety of our students. I would recommend the board continue to make their decisions based on the best available data and the guidance from our public health professionals. And as you know from our last two board meeting discussions on the topic, the CDC and IDPH guidance are crystal clear regarding the role public health officials should be playing in these school district decisions. And as I told you, it's, it's very clear that they are supposed to be providing that guidance to us and to date, we don't have it, and they have not provided it to us. And I've reiterated those frustrations, Chris was in that meeting today and can vouch for the fact that I reiterated those frustrations. And I told them, we're not public health professionals. And that's why the CDC guidance is clear that these mitigation strategies for schools need to be driven by metrics and by public health officials. But right now, we're left with the question, what data are we supposed to be using to make these decisions? And even if you know what data you're supposed to be using, what are the thresholds you're supposed to be using to make your mitigation decisions? And like I said, right now, we don't have that information. Many of the superintendents strongly were asking for that today. And the reason everybody's asking for that is because, as you know, all of us understand as superintendents and as board members, that we can't be asking or we can't be acting arbitrarily when we make these decisions. Because if we act arbitrary and capricious with health and safety decisions, that opens the school district to serious, potential costly liability concerns. And those costly liability concerns are going to be borne by the taxpayers you represent, if that happens. The other thing that I want to come back to in the Whitlaw letter is, according to the information we received today from both the TORT liability carrier and the Whitlaw letter, is making arbitrary decisions on COVID mitigations. Not only opens the school district up to liability, it opens school district officials up to liability, which includes not just administration, but board members. And you would no longer be protected under TORT immunity rules for the school. You'd be on your own if that were the case, if you were named in a suit. So, the, they even go as far as to say, "It opens schools up, including school administrators and board members, to claims of reckless misconduct." So, that being said, as the board requested last week, I've worked with my administrative team and I have a draft and I want to reiterate a draft of a return to school plan to share with you. Based on new information coming out, I've updated that plan daily with the final update being done at about 5:30 today, before the board meeting. I've changed the metric thresholds based on the preliminary information that we got from the Grundy County Health Department officials today. But once again, they weren't committal to that information. I would caution the board in thinking that what we have up there is going to be a final document for public consumption because it's going to change again. More guidance is going to come and it's going to change again. And what worries me is that if you put a document out there for public consumption, people think, that's it, that's the plan. And I can guarantee you, it's going to change again. There's, there's more guidance coming and it's going to change in the coming days. And there will probably be changes that come tomorrow, if not tomorrow, it'll be on Friday. I, I understand full well that parents, staff, and students want to know what the school experience is going to look like August 17th. Everybody in this room wants to know what it's going to look like August 17th. The best information I can give you right now is nobody knows. Nobody knows what it's going to look like August 17th. From the very beginning of the process, which remember was only on July the 9th, we've said that the school district's going to base our COVID mitigation decisions on data. And if we get the guidance we need from local public health officials, I believe we can create a return to school plan with metric thresholds based on local COVID data that outline mitigation strategies given various scenarios. And parents will know what's coming. Some might not like it, but they're going to know it upfront, what's coming. But trying to predict what our local COVID data is going to look like on August 17th right now and provide surety to parents right now, I think would be acting arbitrarily and not basing our decisions on students, or student and staff safety decisions on data. So, like all of you, I hope we receive better guidance and information from local public health officials very soon. I believe it's their responsibility to give that to us. In the meantime, I've given you the facts as I know them, the frustrations we've been dealing with, and I have a draft of a return to school plan. There's some good stuff in here that I'm proud of, that we've worked hard on. But there's a lot of things on this plan as I go through it with you that have been changed, like I said, as of 5:30 today, and will probably be changed again. And, you know, we're, we're live streaming, I know we have people watching at home that are wanting, what's it going to look like, and I wish I could tell you right now. But I, I don't have that information. And until we get it, it's going to be very, very difficult to put a plan together that we're comfortable with moving forward. So, before I get to the plan, I want to answer, because it's a lot of information that's come across just this week. I want to give the board an opportunity to ask any questions, comments, concerns regarding what I've shared so far.
Okay, yes or no?
Yeah. What it seems like it's coming down to, they were giving the option, or giving us the option, or throwing monkey on our back to make that decision, whether you be masked or not masked. Are you vaccinated? Do you need to wear a mask if you're vaccinated? We've got a different variant out there. I've, I've seen 30 different examples of vaccinated that did get COVID, unvaccinated that got COVID. It, it seems like it just comes down to masks. The plan, I mean, the metrics there, and I understand where you're coming from. Where do we draw the line? And, you know, who's going to provide it? Well, they've had, they've had a year and a half to provide halfway decent guidance and they can't even do that. Now we're at the final, I guess at the very end, and they're changing it daily. So, really, in my opinion, at the end of the day, you're, you're back to school. Everything looks great, but it's just going to come down to whether everybody wears a mask or not. And if it's going to become a mask mandate, it becomes a mask mandate for everybody.
Yeah, and I agree with you.
It's the easiest way to go.
I mean, that's what, you know, there's a lot of mitigation strategies. The only one people care about are masks and masks.
Right.
You know, for, for whatever reason, that's the only one people care about. And, and I understand, I do, I'm, I'm well aware of that political reality. But, the, what, what I think, you know, what, what I want to make sure that the school district and this board of education has is clear, and like I said, Quinn, maybe we're not going to get it, but clear guidance of, look, here are your thresholds according to our public health officials, here are your thresholds. When you hit this threshold, we recommend that there's a universal mask mandate. When you hit this threshold, maybe it should be a K-5 mask mandate. If you stay here, we're, we're recommending you're good, you, you can, you can do no mask mandate, you know. The, the problem is, they're, they're putting us into, they're, they're putting school districts, not just us. They're putting school districts in a position of determining whether or not to have masks based on whether you like masks or don't like masks. And that shouldn't be the case.
Absolutely. There comes, there comes a huge financial liability.
There does.
With the wrong, with the wrong decision. You can't, you, you can't go after Pfizer or any of them for this vaccination if there's complications from it. But they can come after us because
But they can come after us because we decided to make an optional for maybe even a second, like you were saying, K-five or, you know.
And I think.
And that's a bad situation.
And I think, Quinn, that's the key, is I think that if we can develop a plan that has metric thresholds in it, that the health department has said, we're good with that. And they may not include a mask mandate for everybody, depending on where we're at. Then I think the school district has, I'm not an attorney, we can ask, but I think the school district has liability protection, or better liability protection, you know. And like I said, I know there's people feel strongly on both sides of this issue, I believe, I hear it, you know, that feel strongly on both sides of this issue. But that liability piece, you know, I don't think any of those people are going to be willing to indemnify the school district and all the board members in case of legal action. And without the health department guidance and metrics that guide our decisions, that's what concerns me. Because otherwise, we're making public health decisions arbitrarily. And I'm the first to tell you, I don't know. I don't know when we should have a mask mandate. I'm not a public health official, you know, and I use the example today because I've had multiple conversations, and somebody mentioned to me, well, "You make safety decisions on, you know, on, you know, school safety issues." And I said, "I'm trained in that. You know, I'm trained to do that. I'm trained to keep our kids safe. I go to seminars. That's part of our training. We're not trained as public health officials." You know, when, when the school starts on fire, I call the fire department. Because they're trained to put it out. I'm not, you know. And the guidance is crystal clear that local public health officials should be providing that information to us to make these decisions. And without it, every school board without it is acting arbitrarily. Unless you're just going to say, there's a mask mandate.
Right. They're almost forcing us into that situation because they won't make a decision.
You know, they're saying that we've got the liability, all of us. You know, what about them? Do they just completely get the shirt, that they have no liability whatsoever?
Yeah.
Because, and they don't because they've recommended. We're recommending you do this. Not mandating it, we're recommending.
They're really backing us into a corner.
Well, I think we've got to follow the CDC guidelines. I mean, I don't think we have a choice. I think we have to follow that if we don't want to open ourselves up to all kinds of things. But it would be nice to get some things from the health department, you know.
And I think you can follow the CDC guidelines with.
Curators.
With curators, yes, with some metrics. And like I said, I think there's some intermediary steps that can happen before there's a mask mandate. You know, maybe there's a K-five mask mandate before there's a six-twelve because of the vaccine or once the vaccine's available. You know, I think there's different, different things that we could do, but it's got to be based on something. If we don't have anything to base it on, I mean, and I know this isn't going to be a popular statement, but I'm just telling you the truth. If you have no metrics to base it on, you almost don't have a choice.
You've got to go back. What is the, there, and maybe it's on here and I just didn't see it, but like, what is there numbers that came up of the low, moderate, substantial? Is it down there?
See, that's a great question. So, so here are what they use. And I'm going to, I asked this question today too. I said, "How do these numbers fall together to move us from moderate to substantial today?" Nobody knows. Nobody can give you that answer. So, that tells you right now that we have thirty-one total cases in the county. We have fifty-one thousand people. We have thirty-one total cases that have been reported in the county. We have zero deaths, this in the last seven days, okay? We have zero deaths. Our percent positivity jumped from like three-point-oh-two to five-point-one-two, whatever that figure is, I can't. We have five-point-one-two. And then you have testing volume, but then you have hospital admissions. Well, we have a total of three hospital admissions in the county. We have this for COVID, COVID-like illnesses. We have percent of hospital beds used for COVID is zero-point-six-four percent. And then ICU beds is zero-point-eight-four percent in our county. I don't get it.
And that's what the substantial rating came from.
And we moved to substantial.
Yeah, it's now point-zero-six with, in relation to population, thirty-one to fifty-one thousand.
So.
It's going to be a roller coaster.
Right.
Because if you go to substantial, okay, you mask up. Everybody wears a mask. What happens when everybody wears a mask? Everything goes down. So then it goes back down. You take them off, and what happens then?
So, I asked questions today about what data do we use? Because number one, yeah, this data is there. I don't understand it. This data is there, but that also is county data. That's not local data. Now granted, we're supposed to be measuring community transmission. Well, what's that mean? Is community transmission our school district community? Is that the county? You know, should we be, I'm not saying this happened, but should we be in substantial because there was an outbreak in Manuka? I don't know if that happened, because I have no idea where those cases are. So, there's just so, so much that we don't know, that we're not receiving information on. And like I said, this move from moderate to substantial, and I'm, Chris was in the meeting. It happened during the meeting that we hit refresh, and the Kendall County person said, "Oh, look at this. You guys just, Grundy just moved to substantial today."
But there's no data that tells you how it moved.
Well, I'm sure it's somewhere, Mary, but I, the statistical piece is somewhere. I just haven't been able to find it, and nobody on the call today can tell me.
So we don't know if that data, if they changed that. I mean, maybe that's lagging by a few days.
No, this is.
Or that's actual right now.
When you look, Jake, can you scroll down? So, sorry, backup. So that's as of Sunday, July twenty-fifth, so it's like three days behind.
Okay.
So that's fairly accurate. They're more up to date than the IDPH site. Now, the IDPH site for schools has different metrics. So, there's an IDPH school metric site that uses different metrics than this. So, long story short, is, you know, I wish I could tell you that this is it, but it's not. Because I think it's going to change, and we're going to keep trying to get what that data should be that we should be using. And I hope we have it by next week for you. I really do. And I know you've been meeting every week, but there could be a chance that it's not by next week, and we got to have another special board meeting to figure it out as it happens. But what I don't want to do is feed our parents information again that we may have to take back, because that's not fair to them either.
Do we need to have our plan B? If we have no data by this date, and I don't care what date you pick. It could be the fourteenth. Then we have no options left but to go ahead and follow through with standard mandates.
I think, Bob, that I had that conversation a little bit with the Wilmington and Reed Custer Co. ones today, where we're like, well, when are we going to, when do we decide? When are we going to pull the trigger? And I think, you know, if we get, if we get to the end of next week without any, any new data, which I really think things are going to change before then, but then I think we're probably going to have to have, once again, a special meeting of, "Here's, here's the backup plan."
Yeah.
And we're going to have to implement it, and we can change it.
Well, if we change it later, but we need to have a point in the sand. So, if we can't make, if there's nothing we can work off of yet, we got to, at this date, we're just going the other direction, and we have no option.
Yeah, we're going to have a drop-dead date.
Yeah, thank you. Drop-dead. We need that drop-dead date. And from there, that's when, if nothing else, by next week, I would want to know what your drop-dead date is. And at that point, we know we have no other option. It's a mandate.
I understand. Let me, Jake, oh, you got it. Let me just go through a few things on the return to school plan that we have in place, just so you kind of know where we're at now. So, this is another interesting point. So, other things, an interesting point.
Well.
The ISBE, remember, put out a declaration, a resolution essentially saying, "Every kid has to be offered in-person learning." Okay? So, they said remote learning, full remote learning's not an option. You know, unless you go through a process and you have a remote learning plan, which is for anybody, it's not pandemic-related, long story. But the, every kid's got to be offered in-person learning. So, if the board wanted to offer some sort of remote piece, which I know we don't right now, but some sort of remote piece, you have to go through a state approval process, because technically, the state has said you can't do that, because every kid's got to be in school. So, so I linked to that declaration. So we put that on there so that everybody knows upfront, hey, remote learning's not an option. And then we reiterated again. The only time you get remote learning is if you're out on a quarantine, which once again, they've changed all those rules, and nobody knows what vaccinated versus unvaccinated and what exclusions both sides have. Today, in the health department meeting, they said they're expecting that guidance to come out. But, so we don't know what that looks like yet. We haven't gotten anything on that.
Like, expecting a B.
Keep going, Jake. Exclusion contact, Tracy. This is all going to change because we don't have the data, we don't have the exclusion chart, but I just put the best-case scenario that we at right now. I know one of the things that the board has felt strongly about is that individuals are not required to disclose their vaccination status to the school district. That's still in the plan. Parents can voluntarily disclose it if they want to, to avoid an exclusion. I changed the mask piece that we had in here because we had in here that masks, there was not going to be a mask mandate, and we were going to follow CDC guidance. Well, right now, I don't, I don't know. So, what I put in there is that the school district will continue to follow CDC/IDPH guidance regarding masking. Masking protocols will be based on recommendations from local health department officials and CDC data on level of community transmission in Grundy County, which is what I showed you before. So it kind of leaves it open. We're still going to follow the guidance right now, the guidance says recommends, but I don't delineate that there's no mask mandate, because we don't know that right now. So the rest of that is just other protection stuff. COVID mitigation measures, I changed the first bullet point to say, instead of there would be no mask mandate, it says the school district will continue to follow CDC/IDPH guidance regarding masking. More information to come. School district transportation has to change. There is still a mask mandate on all school district transportation. We still have the K-five cohorting of students. Remember, we're trying to put some more mitigation strategies in for our K-five kids. Lunch program, we changed that a little bit, where we delineated between pre-K-five and six-twelve to try to put more mitigation standards in for the K-five kids than the six-twelve kids. So we changed that a little bit. Recession, we didn't change from what you've seen before. That's still going to be recommended. Locker rooms, I've talked to the six-twelve principals about this, and I know at the six-through-eight level, because of the number of kids that are in PE at a time, they can't guarantee three feet of distancing. So Mr. Johnson sent something out that we're not going to address for PE in middle school, but they'll adjust their curriculum accordingly based upon that. I believe high school's still going to use the locker room, right? Okay. K-five specials, remember last year, kids, the specials teachers came to the kids. This year, we're still, we're going to let the kids go to the specials, but they're still going to be cohorting. And then in PE class, they're either going to remain in cohorts, because we have the PE teacher and the aide, or they're going to maintain six feet of social distancing, one of the other. Remember, IDPH guidance states that we can go back to normal cleaning disinfecting protocols. Band and chorus classes, now I want to make an important point here. Band and chorus classes are going to resume regular programming. We have students should maintain a minimum of three feet of social distancing at all times. We've talked to the building principals about this. Minimum doesn't mean three feet. Minimum means if you can do more than three feet, you should do more than three feet. So if you have a classroom of chorus kids, and you can only keep them three feet apart in the chorus room, but the auditorium's open, you should move that class to the auditorium where they can separate. So, it's important we remember that minimum of three feet means just that. If you can do more, we should be doing more in the classrooms to keep our kids as safe as possible. Visitors, we delineate again between pre-K-five visitors and six-through-twelve visitors. Pre-K-five visitors are not allowed outside of the main office until a vaccine's available for pre-K-five students. Six-twelve visitors going outside of the office are required to wear a mask. So we're basically allowing visitors at the middle school, high school, guest speakers, things like that, but they have to wear a mask. We're not allowing it K-five. Field trips, same thing. We're limiting K-five. We're allowing it six-through-twelve. And then that's just a statement, and I think this is important, and I've said this over and over again. We want to have the flexibility to deal with potential COVID issues at the micro level, not necessarily jumping to the macro level. We have our kids cohorted at the elementary level. If we have an outbreak in a classroom, we'll deal with that classroom because they're cohorted, not necessarily the entire building or the entire district. And that's what leaves that open. So, so these are the mitigation levels. I changed these from what I previously had, and I changed them based on the preliminary recommendation we received from the health department today, which is to utilize the community transmission levels. So I lumped low and moderate together, and I put what we're current, what we had currently said we were going to do if we were at lower moderate level. Substantial level, and once again, this is far from final. Substantial, I said masks are required for pre-K-five students. Masks are required if closer than three feet for more than fifteen minutes for six-twelve students. We might change that based on what we're hearing from legal and insurance and everybody else. But that's what I put as a placeholder right now. And then if we hit high transmission level, then there'd be a mask requirement for everybody in the district if we hit that level. Once again, I don't know if these are the metrics we're supposed to use or not. But it just puts a placeholder in there for now.
I didn't know either.
So.
It's a good start.
So, you know, that's where we're at. There's a lot more to come. I'm going to say the disclaimer for the tenth time, in case people are watching at home. This is not a final document, and things are changing. They changed all day today, and they changed on Tuesday, and they changed on Monday. So, there's no reason to think it's not going to continue to change. But like Bob said, there is going to come a point where we got to know how to start school. And parents need to know how we're going to start school. And we're going to have to have that discussion at some point. I'm hoping it can be next week. If not, we may have to have a special board meeting to have that discussion.
We can do that. I would rather do that than have a problem. If we have to have a special board, we have to have a special board.
Don't mind the special board meeting. I just think we need to have a date, period. Now we know, but if, if we can't, if you can't give me a date next week, then let's schedule a meeting, a special board meeting, and that's good. For a date that we said we have to have.
Absolutely.
We can schedule that.
We gave this to Friday before the Monday. You know what I mean?
That's a little tight.
Well, you know what? It may be. I mean, that's.
No, I think we need to make the decision before.
I think, you know.
Unless they come back with additional information, we really need that decision made.
My building principals and my teachers and staff are going to need it before then.
Yeah.
Because we have to make some, if we have to make changes to classrooms and move things around. My principals aren't afraid to work on weekends, but they need a little time to get that done. So.
True. That's true.
So once again, I appreciate the board's willingness to listen to this. I always appreciate how the board looks at these things. And I wish I had better information, but it is what it is, and we're going to keep banging away trying to get better information from the people that should be giving it to us.
And I have no doubt that you will do a good job and get us some updated information you can. And that's all we can do. That's all we can do. We're not line readers, and things are going to change.
And I do continue to appreciate. And, and I do continue to appreciate our community and everybody in it. For understanding the situation that they've put us in, not the community, but that the state.
Right.
And, and public health officials have put us in. We'll do the best we can.
That's all we can do.
And we'll get them information as soon as we can.
That's all we can do.
So. Anything else on that?
Well, let's, you have some questions. I think you, you know, I, I can't reiterate again enough that you're spending so much time on this. And it certainly would be nice if we could eventually get back to education. But we got to do what we got to do. Thank you, thank you for all your time.
It's Tina.
It is, it is. And I appreciate it.
So. Finance reports are next, Jay, anything to add on the finance reports?
No, just that this represents the June finance reports. We've finished audit, the field work, it's in production now. We would expect the orders to come in September to present that to the board of education. But certainly entertaining the questions that the board would have.
Anybody have any questions, Jay? It's all pretty self-explanatory, it's there.
All right, I, I have one final item. And I want to inform the board and the district, and I'm going to send something out, but I wanted to talk to the board first. So I am going to be out of the district for a little bit. I'm leaving tomorrow to take my daughter to Pittsburgh for a medical procedure. And there's a chance that I could be out of the district for the next two weeks, which I know the timing's the worst. But we're at a point where we, we have to do this. So I can do a lot of things remotely. I'll be in contact every day. Mr. Spencer's going to be here, my team's going to be here. I, I have the ability to zoom in, I have the ability to phone call, text, everything. So I, I will be not on the ground here, but I'll be engaged in this process as we continue to move forward. My hope is that I can zoom into the board meeting on the fourth. But that may be the surgery date, we're not sure yet. It's either going to be the third or the fourth. But I wanted the board to know that upfront. So I've already talked to Ken and Sean, the board leadership about it. But I wanted you guys to all know that as well. So that's where I'm at right now.
In light of that, I would really like to see that drop dead date, that's next meeting.
You'll have it.
Ken, you take care of what's the most important thing in the world to you, Megan?
Yeah.
You've got a, you've got a quality administration, you've trained them. They wouldn't be in the positions if they couldn't handle this. So I've got the utmost confidence as far as myself with being able to handle that. And I know you're not going to, you're not going to walk away from anything.
I won't, and I have full faith in my people too. I just wanted the board to know why I wasn't going to be here on the ground.
I think we should take that very much. And you take care of you and you take care of your daughter, and that's the most important thing right now. This will still be here, it'll still be here when you get back and.
Probably will.
It's not, it's not going to go away.
It's probably going to change 15 times, bring it back.
Yeah, we've got good people working on it. And I have, I'm like you, but I have full confidence in our administrative team and they're going to do a good job and.
I remind my administrators all the time, no one's bigger than the organization. And no matter what, 2,150 kids are coming to school.
It's, it might be good for him just for the fact that.
I don't know, they're going to be here, whether they're masked, unmasked, whatever.
What'd you say, trying to clutch it again?
Maybe they won't make a decision. Maybe they're not going to have to jump these hurdles. That would be. They'll be up to.
You take care of it. I'll put it in here. His family comes first.
Just wanted to inform everyone.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, any items not noted at agenda time or anything we need to talk about? With that said, then at 6:13, I'll initiate a second motion to adjourn, put some moves, Chuck seconds. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign and we are adjourned.